And the first thing I'd like to do is ask our good clerk, Scott Borling, to please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. It is generally our practice to have an opening ceremony for our meetings, and we are blessed enough to be honored by people who are willing to do that and help us set the tone for our meeting and hopefully for how we will be together in community going forward. So this evening, for that opening ceremony, we have Elder Howard Robinson from Faith Temple Church, and he will be giving, providing invocation. Thank you, Elder Robinson. And then we will be rising for that and then stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, please.
Praise the Lord. It's an honor to be here today. I'm Elder Howard Robinson of the Faith Temple Church of God, where the Honorable Dr. T.D. Lockett is the pastor. And this is the day which the Lord hath made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this marvelous day you've given us. We thank you for your grace and your mercy and for being such an awesome God. We thank you for how you have blessed Kalamazoo to be this type of city that it is, dear heavenly Father. We know that you are just full of blessings, dear God, and we just thank you for that. We seek your wisdom today as Solomon sought wisdom. All things were added to it. We just thank you for this commission, dear heavenly Father. We ask you to lead this great city by your word and by your spirit, through compassion and through love, dear God, and we just thank you for that. We just bless you. We bless you. We honor you in all things. In Jesus' name, we ask it all. Can we all say amen? Amen, amen. God bless your neighbor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Elder Robinson, for joining us this evening. We do have a proclamation, which I don't believe is on the published agenda. And thanks to Commissioner Hess, we have it on the agenda this evening. Thank you for working on that, Commissioner Hess. The proclamation is recognizing National Summer Learning Day, which actually did happen on July 14th. But we do have a proclamation here, and I believe... Is Meg here? Oh, yeah, I see. Meg, please come forward. Commissioner Hess can read the proclamation. I will go down to present it.
Thank you for being here, Meg, and it just gives me great pleasure to read this, being that I believe so strongly in education and for what this actually stands for and the work that you're doing with KidNet. So thank you so much. National Summer Learning Day in Kalamazoo, July 14th, 2022. Summer is bursting with possibilities for all youth to grow, learn, and thrive. High-quality summer learning and enrichment opportunities are more important than ever in 2022. Across our community, summer programs are adapting and innovating to ensure youth and their families can access quality summer learning opportunities and critical supports to take back summer. Whereas, Summer Learning Day is a time to reflect on the importance of keeping youth learning safe and healthy every summer, ensuring they return to school in the fall ready to succeed in the year ahead. And whereas, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth throughout the summer programming. And whereas, there is still a role for summer youth employment programs to engage older youth, whether virtual or in-person, with the support of business and community leaders, our youth can learn, gain real-world experience, contribute to their community and economy, and experience safer environments through summer jobs, internships, and/or volunteering opportunities. And whereas, high-quality summer learning experiences are a critical component of our collective effort to ensure all youth heal, grow, and thrive as they take back summer. Now therefore, on behalf of the 54th City Commission and David F. Anderson, I, Jean Hess, do hereby proclaim July 14th, 2022, as Summer Learning Day in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Staff. July 14th was indeed a bustling day at Bronson Park. We had... At the park to celebrate National Days. We haven't been in person in the park in two years, and so it was filled with joy. Our theme this year is "Emerge, Engage, and Joy." Young people in Kalamazoo created that theme. They were quite intentional about the rationale behind it, that they first had to emerge from the multiple pandemics, from behind a mask before they could engage in high-quality summer learning and enjoy themselves, their peers, adults, and their community. And it was four hours of peer joy at Bronson Park. Thank you for those Commissioners that were there. Percy Gordon, our junior OST coach, couldn't be here tonight, but he was the emcee for the day. We had K.O., a young man who graduated from Loy Norix in the spring. His goal is to be a motivational speaker. He did his first TED Talk on Thursday in Bronson Park. He hopes that this launches his career as a motivational speaker. We had dancers from Rooted. We had young people from Iraq there to celebrate with us. DJ Boogie was our DJ for the day. And it was just an awesome celebration of summer learning, young people in Kalamazoo truly thriving and learning to enjoy themselves again. So thank you very much for your support. By our count, over 3,500 young people are participating in high-quality summer learning this summer. Over, I think, 65 organizations and probably 80 different sites. We'll have all the information for you. So we feel like we're back on track with the number of young people who are participating and the quality of those interventions. So thank you again. We appreciate your support. And here's to an ever-growing and deepening relationship and support of the out-of-school-time sector. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Meg, thank you for joining us this evening, and thanks for your ongoing work. I appreciate that very much as Executive Director of the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network. Thank you. Commissioners, now is the opportunity to adopt the agenda. Have you looked at the agenda? Are there any changes you would like to see? See none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to move any item from G, the consent agenda, to the regular agenda? Seeing no changes. Next is Communications. City Manager Whitman.
I have no communications this evening.
All right. Now there's an opportunity for general public comments, and we can start with those of you who are in the chamber. Speakers will each have three minutes for their comments. Please state your name, whether you live in the city. And after that, we will listen to comments that people are making by calling in. So I'd like to give that number right now so people can be prepared and call in. That number is 888-382-9556. So if you would like to call in now, those calls will be queued up, and you can express your comments after those in the chamber have spoken. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Melissa Ray. I am actively healing and overcoming from human trafficking in this community and abroad. I am also a proud veteran of the war on women that happens in this country and in this community. I was traded from a minority utilized trafficking ring to an immigrant-owned trafficking ring and was ultimately released when the women found out about the lack of consent. Because, you know, consent matters. Praise God that I'm here. I've been called crazy for my story in attempts to invalidate it, to stop me from talking about human trafficking in this community. And I might be crazy in the eyes of some, but not because I tell the truth. So to help everyone understand, and hopefully it can substantiate the claims that I've made just a little bit better, I'll tell you about a story this weekend. My father passed in January, and we held a celebration of life this weekend. Our family gathered, and I was talking to my cousins. And we were at Oshmo Park, so we were in the pavilion, and we could see all the kids playing in the playground. And one of the small children started to wander off the playground and toward the woods. He's fine. That's not the point of the story. One of his cousins returned him to where he should be, and then he was addressed by adults. But his grandmother sent her son swiftly after her grandchild. And she said, "This right here is why I incorporated human trafficking training into the curriculum at Kalamazoo Valley Community College, because there is a human trafficking problem in this community." Kalamazoo is a hub... These are her words, paraphrased, and I'll share her name later. Kalamazoo is a hub between Chicago and Detroit. There is an active human trafficking problem in this community. Sometimes, the only line of defense that... Or the first line of defense that children and female victims have is the healthcare system, which is why she incorporated it into the nursing program at KVCC. That is my cousin. She is Gloria Barton-Berry. She is the retired director of the nursing program at Kalamazoo Valley Community College, since my crazy words aren't good enough. I'm sure hers are. And thank you to her for incorporating that into the training, because honestly, my experience with healthcare is there's an awful lot of healthcare professionals who wouldn't know that there was an issue with human trafficking and it was thrown directly in their face. And believe me when I say...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments here in the chamber this evening? Now is your time.
But I'd like to particularly acknowledge Vice Mayor, because I've known him for a long time. He was a professor for me at Western, Dave Anderson, who I miss seeing in the locker room at the Y. And so I'm here today because I got stirred by... And I want to acknowledge the rest of you for your service. I'm here today because another accident occurred on Fairview, where I live. And I'm not going to surprise you with anything but the word "pothole." And this accident was completely caused by a pothole. A motorcycle person who should have been driving a bike on Fairview hit one. And you could put a basketball through half of that hole. And I do believe that you guys are probably doing the best you can to get the paved streets paved. But I couldn't help but say, "I gotta come here and tell you, it's just terribly dangerous on the streets of Kalamazoo." And this is a footnote, but I live on Fairview, and the street one block over, Montrose, got paved completely from Westnidge all the way to Crosstown. And I don't mean to be silly or jovial about it, but why the hell that street and not Fairview? And why do I ask that? Because Fairview is... It starts at Duke Street, which is one block... You probably all know that. I don't have to describe it. But it's one block west. It starts one block west, Duke Street, gets to Westnidge, and then goes across. And then there's... I'm failing myself, but people come from Parkview, and they avoid the light at White's and Westnidge. It's a big traffic trip right there. And people avoid that and come down Duke Street, turn left and go east, or the other way. If they're leaving, going south, they turn onto my street, Fairview, take a right, and go to Duke Street, and then turn left to get to White's Road, so they can miss the light. So it's a seriously trafficked street compared to places like other streets in the neighborhood. And I got 14 minutes to go. I'm just begging you to look at the damn street, because it is unlike other streets in the neighborhood. Other streets are pretty terrible. But this particular street... And there's the school...
No, your time is up. Thank you. You can catch us afterwards, and I know the City Manager is written down the street. Yes. Anyone else?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Cooney, and City Commissioners. My name is Montis Morales. I reside in the city of Kalamazoo. I am here to support your Safe Street Initiative. I know it's in the making. But the little baby that was hit about a week and a half ago was my niece. And so there's some real action that needs to be taken care of downtown Kalamazoo. So anything that I could do to support that initiative and make our streets safer, not just... City of Kalamazoo, I heard another complaint. And there's, you know, we know construction is going on everywhere. But if there is anything I can do to make that downtown safer so that not another soul gets hit, whether they're jaywalking, walking across the street... For me, I feel like they think it's a highway, even though it's kind of leading to one, and nobody should have to face that trauma. So let me know what I can do moving forward. I'm hoping that the city and the county can, you know, get some collaboration going so that we can support from a county level as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morales. Nice to have you with us here this evening, by the way.
Good evening. I'm Becky Bill. I own Pop City Popcorn. I'm not a resident of the city of Kalamazoo, but I own a business in the city of Kalamazoo. And there are many of us business owners that are very frustrated with the state of the city, the mall specifically, where we have very aggressive, unstable panhandlers. They are aggressive toward business owners. They are following people into those parking ramps. And, you know, people have to clean up where they have defecated right in front of your door of your business. And I think you're voting on something like that tonight. Is that true? Whether that's reduced from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction, well, nothing happens to those people anyway. But we can't have that downtown. We will have no one shopping. We will have no commerce. We will not have businesses, and you will not have a vibrant city. We need help. And I don't know what else to say, but we're just really frustrated with the lack of any kind of observance that we are struggling with that. Like, we really just have to continually scream and yelp, throw our hands up, send emails or whatever, and then we're told that we're elitist because we don't want this kind of activity downtown. Well, I'm just trying to raise my family on the only income we have, which is our business. I have seven children that still live at home. This is not a fun thing for me. Like, it's not my hobby. This is how I support my family. And I can't do that if people will just continue coming downtown because of the aggressiveness of the panhandlers right on the mall. We do appreciate the traffic changes, though, with the two-way streets. So I do want to add that. There's a lot of things that are good, but we need help. We need backup. We need to have just something where things will actually get addressed. And that's, I think, all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of this opportunity for making comments to the Commission? See no one else at this time. Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, has anybody called in?
We do not have any callers, sir.
Thank you, D.C. M. Chamberlain. Next then is the Consent Agenda, G. City Manager Whitman.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 15 items this evening. First is the approval of a one-year contract extension with Big Truck Rental for the rental of Packer trucks in the amount of $111,562.50. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with Kent Communications for utility billing and miscellaneous printing and mailing services in the amount of $159,716.40. Next is the approval of a one-year contract extension with GHD for environmental consulting services at the Cork Street Landfill in the amount of $173,575. Next is the approval of a one-year contract extension with Olometer Corporation for water meeting reading services in the amount of $285,902.25. Next is the approval of a supplemental change order to the contract with Feyen-Ziostro for the electrical switchgear upgrade project at the water reclamation plant in the amount of $442,832. Next is the approval of a contract and purchase order with Lowensbury Excavating for the 33rd Street Transmission Main Project in the amount of $5,876,791.50. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan for the Northside Cultural Business District Authority, a corridor improvement authority pursuant to Act 57 of 2018. Next is the approval of... Or adoption of a resolution granting a payment in lieu of taxes for Kalamazoo Creamery Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership at 1101 Portage Street pursuant to Section 35-4 of the Kalamazoo City Code. Next is the adoption of a resolution recognizing West Michigan Air Care Incorporated as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Next is the approval of the allocation of one full-time equivalent staff person in the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for a business and project special projects coordinator with a focus on the cannabis industry. Next is the approval of a request to transfer prior year 2018 home funds from the Kalamazoo Valley Habitat for Humanity to the Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services and authorize the payment of grant funds to KNHS for the construction of new affordable housing. Next is the approval of a grant of $200,000 to Milestone Senior Services from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds received under the American Recovery Plan Act for critical and minor home repairs for the elderly. Next is the approval of a housing development fund grant in the amount of $156,000 to Community Homeworks for their critical and code enforcement repair program. Next is the acceptance of a fiscal year 2022 Watershed Council Support Grant in the amount of $29,500 from the State of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And finally, approval and acceptance of easements from CD-1909 LLC for emergency vehicle access as part of the access to storage buildings at 1609 White's Road.
Thank you, Manager Whitman. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve Items 1 through 15 and authorize the City Manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes, I'm going to abstain from G13 as Community Homeworks is my employer.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the Consent Agenda are approved. Now we are down to Item H, the regular agenda. H1, Manager Whitman.
Adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 of the Kalamazoo City Code, General Crimes and Offenses.
Is there a staff report, Manager Whitman?
I'm not sure if the city attorney has anything about this.
No, there's no additional report.
Okay, no additional report. I guess maybe I'll ask a question or two here, just on the staff report side. Just some clarific... A very brief clarification, you know, on what we're doing here. I mean, I think there's been a little misunderstanding maybe in saying, "Well, we're saying anybody can do anything now. We're taking certain things off the books." You know, what is the approach that we're taking? Are we approving certain activities that we actually still don't want in the community? What is our change here?
Thank you, Mayor. The change is basically threefold. We are eliminating certain offenses that are never or hardly ever enforced, like spitting on the sidewalk. There are other offenses that are being removed that no longer are considered a crime under either state law or state jurisprudence, such as fortune telling. Finally, we are taking many offenses that are currently misdemeanors, making them a civil infraction. They still are a violation of our ordinances. It's just that no longer carries a criminal sentence. The individual, if they are responsible for the violation, show up at court, pay a civil fine, and that's the end of it in general.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Any questions for Attorney Robinson? I know this is not... We'll be voting on it this evening. So this has been on our agenda before, as every ordinance change has to be. So this is the second time. Had a longer discussion about it. Any specific questions on this from Commission tonight? Vice Mayor Cooney.
Just to make sure, so if we're not legitimizing public urination or anything like that, we're just saying that it's decriminalized, but they would have to pay a fine if they're convicted of that.
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Hess.
And the same with littering. Can you go over the shift in littering?
I don't have the... Let me get to... I think I called that email up. Thank you. Littering, while it is currently a misdemeanor, would become a civil infraction. However, there is a shift, if you will, in terms of how much is littered. Right now, it doesn't matter whether you dump a candy wrapper or you empty your house and dump it somewhere. It's the same fine. It's up to a $500 fine. What we... With civil infractions, cities are no longer constrained by that $500 criminal penalty. And so what we've done is scale it depending on the cubic size of the trash that is deposited. Again, it's a civil infraction, a civil fine. So if it's the candy wrapper I just mentioned, it's a $200 fine. If it's... Because that's less than one cubic foot. If it is more than one cubic foot but less than three cubic feet, it would be a $200... I'm sorry. feet, it would be a $200, I'm sorry, it would be a $500 fine. And if it's more than three cubic feet, it would be up to a $2,500 fine.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hess? Yeah, right. Any other questions from commission? See no one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item in particular, Item H1? If so, please come to the podium, give us your name, and where you live in the city. You'll have three minutes for your comments. See no comments? Yes, please. That's the only way everybody will hear you.
Yes, Sherry Emery. I own Sherry's Chocolate Art Downtown. We have a major problem downtown, and I don't understand why even it would be proposed that the law would be less restrictive than it is right now. A fine, the people that are urinating, defecating, doing all the things that they do, and we live with it every single day. I don't understand why we'd make it easier for them. And do you think they're actually going to pay a $200 fine or a $500 fine? No, they're not. I absolutely object, and I know every single merchant on my mall objects as well.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on this item? See no one. At this point, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Juarez.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate it, Becky, and owner of Sherry's Chocolates for coming in here and sharing, you know, your perspective. You know, I absolutely, you know, we as an entire community need to find ways to proactively support people who need resources and need access to facilities and resources in our community. You know, one of the reasons why I am supportive of this is because it's not- its aim is not to roll out the red carpet or a welcome mat for people who commit crimes. It still provides guardrails. It still provides accountability, but one thing a lot of people don't realize is a misdemeanor is for life as much as a felony. And so many things come with a permanent record on somebody's record. Anything from a job to access to education, if you're here illegally or even legally, can be deported. You know, there are a lot of ramifications to, you know, having a misdemeanor record on your record for life unless you're able to get it expunged at some point. And so I think what you see is, like in the language, now instead of it just saying you are guilty of blank, it says you are responsible or guilty in some cases, or responsible. And so it's not admonishing them of responsibility for doing things they're not supposed to. The other thing is, as the law is written, you know, and even still arguably a little bit, but, you know, if you think about access to facilities, you know, or somebody who has no place to put their possessions, or if you don't have the ability to pay for bulk trash pickup at your house or to pay for trash removal at your house, who is that disproportionately going to impact? People who already have not a whole lot. And so, you know, I would challenge us as a community, all of us as a community, to continue to think of ways to be creative. You know, we heard some strategies that we're working on earlier at our committee of the whole meeting, and it's going to take time. And but I really think this is the right thing if we want to do, if we want to create a truly more equitable community and laws that are, punishment meets the crime, if you will. That's all.
Thank you, Christian Pradel. Christian Hoffman?
Thank you so much. So, a couple of things. We talked in our committee of the whole, we talked about community partnership and how it takes all of us to make a better Kalamazoo. What I heard just now was those people, which pits us against them. The other piece I heard was our mall. The mall belongs to Kalamazoo. And so when you see a person that may be defecating, someone in their same mind would not actually do that. There is an issue. There is a crisis. There is some trauma that is going on. So how can we partner with businesses to notify someone at the city or somewhere to say, we're having this issue. Can someone come and help? As frustrating as this is, that this is happening on Kalamazoo's mall, this is happening all throughout the county. And so it is disheartening, and it is unfortunate, and it is hard to see here and be a part of when we have inequities in our housing sector, and we have inequities in our healthcare systems, specifically around mental health. So this is not just an individual issue that is happening. This is a crisis that is happening in our entire community, and it will take all of us to show some level of empathy and compassion. And it also gives us a place to start building a relationship with the businesses on the mall in a deeper way. Thank you.
Other discussion, commission? So, as far as my thinking about this, and I understand the idea of it feeling counterintuitive, actually, relative to, I would say, the last few years, a more recent increase of challenges that we're all witnessing for people who are out and about in downtown Kalamazoo, that this also is not an answer. And I can tell you that the approach of criminalizing these activities has also not done anything about it. And we're not in a situation now where we have a jail that's, you know, willing to put people in jail for public urination, for example, that sort of thing. It does take a lot of public safety officer time to take somebody to the jail and attempt to book somebody in, which would not happen for most of these things. No one's going to go to jail for littering, so generally speaking. So what I'm hoping out of this, in a very purely pragmatic way, is that it will give us the opportunity to address these issues in an immediate fashion. I don't disagree that it is likely that many, many people who receive these kinds of tickets also will not be able to pay the fee, but that it will allow our public safety officers perhaps to engage, have that opportunity, work with our partnership organizations, including ISKNTOWN, to address those very, very challenging issues and have more time rather than, you know, spending a third of their shift getting somebody transported, you know, for a booking that's not going to happen. So I guess that all said, this is also under the umbrella of the idea that we talked about many years ago in terms of, I would say, decriminalizing portions of our ordinances in an attempt to, for equity, but also an attempt to more efficiently recognize how we are asking our own public safety department to address these issues. So I hope that this is, ends up being beneficial for everyone that's involved and related to the specific concerns that you're bringing to us this evening. I think, obviously, those want further discussion. I'm certainly open to that. I look forward to it, more than we're going to have in our business meeting tonight. So being here, stating your concerns, that's a good, probably doesn't feel like a first start to you, but at least a more public step to bring those issues forward. We just had our DDA Dega meeting, which I attended this afternoon. Those were certainly, those concerns were expressed to that group as well. So I hear you. Guess I'll say that. Clerk Bowlin, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Manager Ritzma?
Item H2 is the first reading of an ordinance to revise Chapter 20B of the Kalamazoo City Code, which licenses and regulates medical and adult-use marijuana businesses licensed by the state and permitted to operate in the city.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Attorney Robinson, do you have a statement you'd like to make on this?
No, the statement and the presentation I gave two weeks ago at the committee of the whole meeting, I have nothing more to add unless there's questions from the commission.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Are there questions for Attorney Robinson this evening? From commission? All right, just as a reminder, had a long presentation about this, talked about it in detail. This is the first time we've seen it. So without any further questions, we had the opportunity to do that, and that's all recorded and available, right, Manager Ritzma? Is there anyone who's in the chambers this evening who'd like to comment on this See no one. The recommended action is a motion to offer the ordinance for first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Cooney?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker? No, Commissioner Hess? All right, thank you. Any other discussion, Commissioners? See no one. Clerk Bowlin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item H2 is offered for first reading. Next, our reports in legislation. City Manager Ritzma, do you have a report?
Not this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, we are at the time for commissioner comments. Anyone who would like to start this evening? Commissioner Decker, are you volunteering?
I am. I'm- it'll be quick. Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say, if you did not catch the committee of the whole, our KDPS team did a great presentation about what's going on within the city of Kalamazoo and the engagement that they're having with our youth. I do want to bring up something to KidNet, and I believe she's already gone, but KidNet will be having a youth day also on August 20th. So that's something that I think we can bring all of our youth out into, get them engaged. I believe that's going to be hosted at WMU. But I believe KidNet will have some information on their website. I just want to say, I was listening to one of the officers speak today and the recruiting officers, and, you know, it became very emotional when you have a, especially a woman standing up there saying, you know, I will give, also be proud of my child if it is a woman that wants to serve on the KDPS team. So I think that's awesome. I'm sorry, I just got a little bit of emotional on that because, you know, I know what they go through every day, and I know how hard that is to walk out of that door and leave your family behind. I do want to give my prayers again to Officer Mayor and his family, hoping that, you know, he has a speedy recovery. Glad that he's moving along quite well there. And I just want to say, you know, I'm proud to be up here with you guys. I enjoy all of our conversations. Again, we may not always see eye to eye, but we always come together for the greater good of the city. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Decker. I'm looking for volunteers this evening. Christian Pradel?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple follow-ups from the comments that came in as well. I know a gentleman who was here talking about the pothole on Fairview. One of the things I found that's been a really handy tool, and I used to have a website extension. It used to be something like kalamazu city.org/reportaproblem or something like that, but I don't think it's the same anymore, so I don't want to give that away and give the wrong thing. But if, generally speaking, if you Google "city of Kalamazoo, report a pothole," an online form will come up. And it's not just for reporting issues related to potholes. So it's city street issues, sidewalk issues, signage, et cetera. And definitely would encourage people to go on there and report those, but you can also call 311. That's one of the gifts that we, you know, that's been great to the community in the midst of the pandemic, is if you just call 311, you can report it there and it gets catalogued. You can also email 311@kalamazu city.org. Certainly, it's great if you're willing to take the time to come out to a meeting, but we know not everybody has the time to, you know, every other meeting to come out and report issues like that. So it's, appreciate you coming out to share that, but I just want to empower everyone to take advantage of those tools so that can be taken care of. I have kind of like ghost-tried it, if you will, to see if it works, and it works. It legitimately does, and I actually found the responsiveness and service of trying that out was very effective and usually was responded to accordingly. Also, I wanted to say hi as well to Vice Chair of the County, Montez Morales, and coming here to speak tonight and speak to that two-way conversion project that's coming, you know, in terms of things that will make a huge impact. You know, there is a misconception about what this two-way conversion project is to our community, but the reality is, we know there are two giant highways that are streaming through the middle of our downtown, creating islands of our, two of our core neighborhoods. You know, we heard a presentation, I think it was one or two meetings ago, where they were talking about how, one year after we switched from the original two-way conversion to one way, the way it is now, that speeds were logged at 11 miles per hour on average faster after one year. So what does that tell you? It is dangerous, right? And something needs to change. So there are going to be, you know, opportunities, I would imagine, at some point down the road to provide input and hear about that process that goes. It's not going to be an instant, one year, and all the streets are going to be changed, but when it does happen, it's going to be transformative for generations, for generations. And so that hopefully no precious niece or small children ever have to worry about, or any person worry about getting clipped by a vehicle or harmed by a vehicle in our downtown. So please help spread the word that this is about systemic change in our community, starting with our downtown. There was also a really good segment on WMUK, I think, this last week, as well, talking about that as well. So I encourage people to check that out if they haven't as well. Really quick, we just want to end this, and I'm going to try to make a goal, as long as I'm up here, to always do this before every single election, because this is the world that we live in, unfortunately. I want to just make sure to convey my utmost belief and trust in the people who are the guardians of our sacred process of elections and voting, that we have the best of the best in the business, working here for the city of Kalamazoo, ensuring a fair and thoughtful process to make sure that every single person's vote counts and matters in this community. And I know there are thousands of other individuals around the country that do the same way, but I am particularly proud of our team, you know, Clerk Bowlin, Deputy Clerk Moss. And just wanted to take that pause and moment before this election to make sure that I have faith and trust in the integrity of our election process and the people who are managing our process and believe in that system and that process. And, you know, I think it is such a powerful thing, even if we have a primary coming up here on August 2nd, you know, that whether you're a billionaire here in this community or, you know, you make 12 bucks an hour, every single person's vote carries equal weight. So thank you for making sure that that process and each person has that equal weight when it comes to voting in the election. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Christian Pradel. Commissioner Hess?
I'll go. I'll take a page from Meg Blunkiewicz from KidNet. We are emerging, we are engaging, and we are enjoying. We are merging into this city of, with democracy. Last Friday, we were able to meet, some of, a few of our commissioners were able to meet with representatives of governments from Kosovo, Slovakia, the Philippines, and Germany to talk about democracy and how the process works here and elsewhere. So we're engaging. We're engaging with the world. And to have that opportunity here in Kalamazoo is just something so wonderful and unique, and I appreciate them having visited here. Our, so Friday, I was able to also attend with some of you the opening of the city, the place, the Children's Nature Playscape, right here across Bronson Park. One time when my grandson was visiting Lunchtime Live, we told him we're going down to the park to have lunch, and we're sitting there eating lunch, and he's like, when are we going to the park? There's no place to play in Bronson Park, except to run around and maybe look at the statues, but like, he didn't have a place to play. He has a place to play now, and so do many, many children in, throughout Kalamazoo. So I hope that people can visit the Children's Natural Playscape. And a big shout out to Jody Brolinsky and all the folks at First Congregational who really worked hard on that project, all the people- able to recover fully from his accident and just know that we're here with him. And I am proud to serve with all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to say that over the past week, I have been so impressed with so many of the programs for young people in the community. Commissioner Hess just mentioned Playscape across the street. What a wonderful, wonderful project that is. And it was really interesting to see the little kids, when the gates opened, to see them run in there, and before you knew it, they had their shoes off, they're playing in the water, they're playing, and they were just having the greatest time. And thank you for doing that. Secondly, Kidnet and the project that they had, they said there were over 500 kids out there for that day, and that was just great. And the young people that ran the program, that was wonderful, the leadership that they showed. Had a chance to go over to Kalamazoo College for the Police Athletic League's basketball program over there, and they had 60 young people over there that night. And thanks to Kalamazoo College for letting them play on such a beautiful court. So that was great. Also, I've had a occasion, I'm watching my grandkids now during the summer, a couple days, and we went over to kick pool a couple, many times this summer, and how well that's run for those kids and how much they enjoy it. And then the, the, the day camps came over when they were there, and I was so impressed with how well they were being run and how many people were taking advantage of that. So it just makes you really proud of all the wonderful things that are happening for our young people. And I know I'm, I'm just touching on it, the things that are going on with STEM programs, the things that are going on, Lewis Walker Institute has a program this summer for young people, educational things that are going on. It's just great to see those things happening in the community, and I, and I thank everybody that's involved in it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are we playing the waiting game here? Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you so much. I wanted to lift up, we talked earlier in the committee about, you know, the need for trauma care with the KDPS and the staff there, and, and we need that same kind of care within our communities. And, and so I want to lift up the Black and Brown Therapy Collective. It is a collective of licensed black and brown therapists here in Kalamazoo with other language options as well. They offer culturally competent services and also help with racialized trauma. ISK does a great job, and then we have another resource in our community as well. So I felt compelled to lift that up for people who want options, right? And so the Black and Brown, Black and Brown Therapy Collective, which is housed and rooted. And I want to thank the business owners on the Mall for coming in and seeing what you felt, and, and I hear you. I hear you and I see you. And I also see systems that are antiquated and that are prohibiting us from moving forward in, in a lot of ways. You know, I read an article in Second Wave Media, and it talked about the conversations that are beginning to happen because we have unhoused pets. And so they're looking for, or looking at the possibilities of creating a space, a building where unhoused pets will have somewhere to reside. Well, where will the pet owners go? Where will they go? I know the value of a pet. I know that they are family for many of us, and we have to put humanity first again, and we've lost that. And so I wanted to lift that up. We need shelter for people, and I'm not talking about just temporary shelter. I'm talking about permanent supportive shelter and housing where people can have a safe place to live and also have access to supportive services to help them continue to thrive. We have a lot of people that are just surviving right now, and it is time for humans to begin to thrive and live again. And then secondly, I, I want to raise the fact that I'm working with an organization now, and we are trying to come up with a midterm solution to our housing crisis here in Kalamazoo. We have 50 pods that are in storage right now where we could be housing families, not families, but adults. 50 pods that we could be housing at least 66 individuals, and we have to do something. We are going to go into another winter, and people are going to be cold and homeless again, when we could have done something two years ago, five years ago. So the issues that we are experiencing on the Mall, in our neighborhoods, part of it is a system that is antiquated, and we need to do something about that. Thank you all. Keep playing for us, community, because we need it as a community.
Thank you, Krista Hoffman. Krista Juarez.
I guess I'm the last one.
Yeah.
So I got a lot of stuff on my heart. Friday, I was able to attend my, my kids' soccer scrimmages at Emerald Park. And what I seen gathered there were my people, the Hispanic population. Why I say I have a heavy heart is because for years, the Hispanic population's been put on the back burner when it comes to opportunities, when it comes to resources, when it comes to getting cut in front of the line by other people's problems, being more superior to the problems that the Hispanic community faces. We've been governed by a government that says assimilate because your ways are not adequate enough. Do like we want you to do because it's the best way. And what I seen at Emerald Park was a gathering of people who enjoyed that time. I think about Adrian at the Hispanic American Council, I was having lunch with him earlier today, and we were talking about the lack of opportunity and resource for the Hispanic community. And it's troubling to me, very, very troubling to me. And I know, for me, we have to, we have to create a voice for ourselves. I've always said, I don't want to fight to be at the table. This community should accept the fact that I'm here, right? And Emerald Park is such a, like, that park is out of the way, has no access, only a couple points, it's undeveloped, there's no, there's no bathrooms there, you know, it runs all the way from Cork Street, I mean, from, yeah, from Cork Street almost to, I don't even know what the, it's back there behind Consumers Energy. And it's almost like, you know, that's a space where a lot of my people gather to see these things happen. Adrian from the Hispanic American Council has been developing this gathering called the Mikado, where a bunch of vendors come and are able to sell some of their stuff, right? And I, I will be championing a special day at the farmer's market for Hispanics to have a day where they can go and sell their stuff there, because it, there's only three, three Hispanic businesses that actually use the Hispanic, I mean, use the farmer's market, right? My culture is very vibrant, very proud, very intelligent, and I'm, my heart is so heavy because we've gone through so much throughout the pandemic, through immigration stuff, I mean, so many things. You know, I think about some of the stuff that was happening in the early 20s, 30s, 40s, Hispanics were dealing with the same stuff. You know, we were being hung just as much. We were being ostracized and pushed out in ways where Hispanics are so resilient, you know, we hear this, this, this stigma about Hispanics, they're hard workers. I believe that, I truly do. You see, most of our farms are being worked by Hispanics. You know, you think about the migrant workers, you think about the people who are, who are here and who are working those farms. A large majority of those people look like me. A large majority of the people who own those places look like you, right? And it's, and it's not to be disrespectful or anything, but for me, I'm, my heart is heavy because it, it doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel good not to have opportunities, not to have the resources we deserve. We're part of this community, and from here on out, I think I'm going to be fighting and championing for that, for my people to have a space at the table so that we can see each other equally, we can be part of a community that, that is thriving together, not being determined by one's perspective or one's culture, but being lived out by many different perspectives and cultures. And I think that's going to be, when we start to see that happen, we can start to say, Kalamazoo is for everybody, right? And so I just wanted to share that because, you know, I think it, it's just time for my people to have those resources and those opportunities. That's it.
Thank you, Christian Juarez. I've mentioned this before, but it's, it's, it's always interesting being the one who speaks last here because you just crossed all kinds of things off your list that you were going to say something about. And I really appreciate, we're talking about great things that are happening around town. We're talking about, you know, the natural playscape, we're talking about the visits that Global Ties is arranging in town here, talking about our great city clerk, talking about youth programs, talking, you know, hearing from our businesses and talking about business, talking about, things are important to all of us. But we also hear, I believe on this dais, something else. And I, I think there's two parts to that, something else. One is, is that we aren't the story. The community is the story. And I believe that we all feel that our job is to, as much as we can, set the tone for how we're going to be with each other in this community. And that doesn't mean that we won't bring up our topics. That doesn't mean that we, we honestly might have a very different perspective on how to address a particular problem, but what we are doing here is expressing a shared value of hope and a belief in our common humanity. And that's what we're going to carry forward, that's what we do at our meetings, and that's the work we're going to do, and we are encouraging everyone in our community to be part of that, and not only talk about it, but do the work. Thank you to all of us who's shared this evening with us tonight. Thank you to county commissioners who joined us this evening. I think, appreciate you having you here with us. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.